Let's get started, Madam Secretary.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held verbally through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, July 16, 2025. I will now call the roll. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin, present. Commissioner Cirula.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell is absent. Commissioner Duke.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Carmody.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Muddin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio is absent. Commissioner Ramperchad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, July 2, 2025.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers six through eighteen. Scheduling Wednesday, July 30, 2025, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. I'll note, calendar numbers one through five are laid over from the scheduling.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page seven, but I'll note we are going to jump to the public hearing section on page ten.
Okay, that'd be Claremont House?
Yes. For the Bronx, calendar numbers thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Claremont House, 1640 Anthony Avenue, CD4. Calendar number thirty-three, C250220HAX. Calendar number thirty-four, C250221ZMX. Calendar number thirty-five, N250222ZRX. Public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments, UDOT designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Claremont House, 1640 Anthony Avenue. And I'll just note, we are joined by an applicant team for two minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here today. My name is Adam Beckerman, and I'm a Senior Borough Planner at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. We're excited to present to you today Claremont House. Claremont House is a proposed sixty-five unit affordable homeownership project located at 1640 Anthony Avenue in the Claremont neighborhood of the Bronx. To facilitate the development, we are seeking the following land use actions: a zoning map amendment to rezone the area from R7-1 to R8, a zoning text amendment to MAP MIH, a designation of an urban development action area and approval of an urban development action area project, and disposition of vacant city-owned site. To provide some background on this site, in 2018, the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan included recommendations to create more affordable housing in this study area. As a response, in 2019, HPD released the Jerome Anthony RFP that included two sites with Site B being designated for affordable homeownership opportunities. HPD, through the competitive RFP process, chose this project and the development team consisting of Habitat for Humanity, Camber, and Almat Urban, who will introduce themselves in a moment. The Bronx has some of the lowest homeownership rates in the city, so we are excited to be able to bring you this project today. I will now hand it over to the development team to talk more about the project details.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charlotte Bell. I'm the Senior Vice President of Housing at Habitat NYC and Westchester County. The development team for Claremont is a joint venture comprised of three entities: Habitat for Humanity New York City, Camber Property Group, and Almat Urban. All three developers have extensive experience developing affordable housing in New York City and specifically the Bronx. And our design team is comprised of Ramsah as the architect and Fifth Avenue Builders as the general contractor, both with successful track records and extensive experience designing and building affordable housing in the city. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Satya Fisher. I'm a project manager at Habitat for Humanity. One of the great things about this project is its location, overlooking Claremont Park and Crotone Park less than a half mile away. Residents will have easy access to many neighborhood amenities. Another neighborhood amenity is the easy access to transportation. There are multiple bus stops within a five-minute walk of the site. So as stated, the Claremont House project will be a sixty-five unit affordable homeownership project with one supers unit. An emphasis of the project is sustainability and resident health and wellness. We will be pursuing Enterprise Green Community Certification and designing with Passive House principles. Another exciting piece of this project is the community land trust. So at project completion, the land will be transferred to the community land trust, and through a ground lease, the community land trust will be able to regulate affordability, ensuring the units stay affordable in perpetuity. Here's an overview of the zoning change map. We're looking to rezone from R7-1 to R8. This will allow for an additional twenty-six units of affordable homeownership to be built. Because this is a homeownership project, there was an emphasis on building larger units. So including the supers unit, half of the units will be two and three bedrooms. All of the units will be built towards the upper end of the design guidelines. In addition to the neighborhood amenities, the residents will have access to building amenities such as a wellness and community room, bicycle storage, a rear yard, and all of the units will have in-unit laundry. Here's an overview of the AMI levels we're targeting. We're targeting that sixty to ninety percent AMIs. You can see what that breaks down to as far as the unit price ranges and below what the AMI ranges are for an income for a family of three. At Habitat, we pride ourselves not only in developing affordable homeownership, but also in the homeownership support that we provide. So before, prior to purchasing, all of our homebuyers take a HUD-certified first-time homebuyer course. They then come to Habitat where we customize a curriculum that gets them ready for homeownership. Post-purchase, all of our homeowners can expect support not only from Habitat, but also from the community land trust. In addition to that support, we also provide quarterly homeownership help desk sessions that cover a wide range of topics that could be impacting our homeowners. With that, I'll turn it over to the design team.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Grant Marani. I'm a partner at Robert Ames Stern Architects, otherwise known as Ramsah, and I'm delighted to be here to present our design to you. You know enough about the site already. It's been explained, but basically the site is around ten thousand square feet. The footprint of the proposed building is around six thousand square feet, ninety-nine by sixty feet, and it has a setback off the streets to provide a little bit of privacy for the homeowners. Here you see the existing context. Where the trees are is where our site is. To the north, a residential building, a five-story residential building. To the south, a two-story daycare center. There are no lot line windows on either buildings, the neighboring buildings. Here you see a massing study of the proposed building. You get a sense of how it relates to its immediate neighbors and also importantly, how it relates to the buildings that are up on the hill there. So it's roughly the same height as those buildings. And also, there's access directly from Claremont Park down to actually the front door of the proposed building. Here you see the ground floor plan. On the right is the entrance to the building. It has a clear view through to the back of the building where there will be a landscaped garden. And you see superintendent's apartment, giving each to the left and bottom. And there are two other apartments facing the garden. There's a two-bedroom and then a one-bedroom facing the street. Here you see the amenity floors that such you just mentioned previously. They all face out, all these rooms face out to the garden that I mentioned before. And so it'll be landscaped. There'll be places for people to sit, to socialize, and the like. This is a typical floor plan. You can see here primarily one-bedrooms along the street frontage, and then the larger apartment space, the garden. Here you have a view of the building. It's very much the Bronx in terms of its materiality, bricks, common bricks that are designed in a certain way to give it a little bit of character and dignity, we think. And we are very honored to be able to create this building in the Bronx. And here you see another view of the building looking back towards the north, that you get a sense of the wonderful use of windows to take advantage of the views towards Claremont Park. So thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. I'll get to Commissioner Benjamin, but let me just ask this one. What is the state of, I guess, HPD? What is the state of community preferences? Now, does, this is what Community Board for? Would there be a preference for Community Board residents? What is the state of that policy right now?
Yes, I believe as it stands today, it is a twenty percent community preference. I am not exactly sure what date it changes, but it'll then fall down to fifteen percent community preference, and I think the fifteen percent might apply to this project.
You want to add to that? I don't know.
No, that's correct. That's pursuant to a court settlement.
Just step closer to the mic.
Yes, that's pursuant to a court settlement to reduce it from had been the fifty percent to twenty percent right now, and then in the near future, it goes down to fifteen percent. But it applies to this project.
What triggers the reduction from twenty to fifteen?
The settlement.
Settlement?
Court settlement.
It was said after a certain period of time, which I'm sorry, I don't have what the period of time is, but it would go from fifty to twenty, and then after a certain amount of time to fifteen.
Commissioner Benjamin, and then Commissioner Muddin.
Yeah, I was wondering if you had the total carrying costs for individuals who would be homeowners, which includes the maintenance cost plus their mortgage. What are we looking at in terms of a monthly carrying cost?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I can get you that, though.
Okay. I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Muddin?
Thank you. So just following up on Commissioner Knuckles' question, when does the fifteen or twenty percent kick in? When is, is it, does that decision get made at sales, or is it when at advertising? When does that decision get made?
It's when it's using our Housing Connect process, which is our marketing process, when it's advertised that there are units available. You know, the ad will mention specifically that that's what the criteria is. It lists the criteria and says that twenty percent of the units, depending again on when they're ready to do the marketing, you know, either say twenty percent will be the preference, not a set aside. It says the preference for twenty percent of the units would go to people who are residents of Community Board four. And then if it's past that next milestone, it would then say fifteen percent would go to residents of Community Board four.
So when you're marketing and you're saying twenty percent, you're saying, are you saying also that in the middle of the marketing process, it could drop to fifteen? Or once it's set at twenty, it's twenty?
It's as of the time that the
That the marketing
The marketing happens.
Okay. Second question was relative to the north and south walls and the treatment of those walls. I know at some point, there was some discussion about the treatment of those walls. So if we can get that question answered, and then there's one left, and that's for HPD, I'm sure.
Hi, my name's Sammy Jower. I'm a project manager for Robert Ames Stern Architects. So with the lot line windows, they are not prescribed windows in the sense that they are not providing light and air towards the calculations for light and air for those rooms. However, they do provide a little additional light for those residents. That said, the discussion that we've been having ongoing with the development team is potentially removing those lot line windows.
So right now, currently, you're planning for lot line windows, but there is a possibility that they may be removed on both north and south walls?
That is correct. However, we would, we would replace them with blind panels. We wouldn't want a blank facade.
Of course, I understand that. And then my last question was, is relative to the open-door term sheet, MIH layering, resales, and if there's a possible CLT. The original question presented on Monday was, how are, how is MIH being layered, and how is resales, how are resales on the MIH side being handled?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. So with the passage of, yes, for housing opportunities, several new options were included to meet MIH requirements. One of the new options to meet these requirements of MIH is if the project is subject to an affordable housing regulatory agreement. So this project meets this requirement by having a regulatory agreement with HPD, and its requirement of homeownership will be a Housing Development Fund Corporation or HDFC. So an HDFC includes resale restrictions and maximum resale amounts. Additionally, this development will be on a community land trust, which holds the ground lease for ninety-nine years, and this will allow the CLT to monitor the resale of units, to ensure affordability, and to receive tax assumptions, which includes further affordability restrictions. So I guess that's a long answer to say that, that we meet the MIH by having this regulatory agreement and that the sales are restricted by the HDFC.
So the, your regulatory agreement will include language that covers the MIH units and the, and the amount that they can be sold at, and the percentages that they can receive as equity at the end?
Yeah, all the, all the units will be subject to the HDFC requirements.
And how would, if someone is reselling a unit that's, that's specifically an MIH category unit, how do you, how does that get handled? I mean, that specific, this, the reason for the specificity is because this is not just your typical homeownership where you sell back, you pay back fifty percent of the subsidy, if you pay after a certain amount of time, and then it scales down after that. And so that's, that's, that's sort of an understood. The more quirkier and not understood part yet is the MIH and how those sales will be handled. Does that person then need to meet the MI, the, excuse me, the AMI that they met when they first started?
So I think the wrong way to think about it is that there's like a separate like MIH unit versus not MIH unit. Where the way it's, this option is laid out is that by having this regulatory agreement, we meet the MIH requirements. And, and because this is specifically for projects receiving, you know, subsidy from the city. So this is, this doesn't apply, this option doesn't apply to private sites who want to do homeownership. So the thinking is that, you know, having a regulatory agreement with HPD meets a lot of the requirements and, you know, different metrics of MIH. But I wouldn't think of it as like these twenty units are different MIH units.
Thank you.
Just let me follow up on the, in terms of initial purchases, is the purchaser expected to procure his or her own financing, or does the city provide a portion of it? How, how does that work?
Hi, yes, thank you for the question. The buyers, the first-time homebuyers in our program will be expected to acquire their own financing, but we do assist with that through education classes, so people can access the down payment assistance loan from the city.
I'm sorry, the what?
The Home First Loan from the city for down payment assistance. And then there are Sony Mae Mortgage products that have very favorable terms, specifically Achieving the Dream. So we would certainly point applicants in that direction. And other, other lenders that we've worked with and had successful partnerships on affordable homeownership are Amalgamated, Webster, TD Bank, and M&amp;T.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this, Madam, speakers on this item, Madam Secretary?
I am seeing no other speakers on this item. We, no other speakers, confirmed.
All right, then we will close the hearing. Thank you. Our next matter is 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning.
For Brooklyn, calendar number thirty-six, 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning, CD1, C250090ZMK. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning. And we'll have a three-minute presentation by the applicant representative, Adam Rothgrub.
Do I press or this goes on? Green light. Got it. And you'll excuse my lack of talent forwarding of the slides. But anyway, thank you. Good to see everyone. It's been a while since we testified in person. I'm here today on behalf of the owners of the property at 535 Morgan Avenue, which is an affiliate of Midwood Investment and Development, a third-generation family-owned real estate company with holdings in New York City and beyond. The application we're seeking is a rezoning from M1-1 to C7-1 to permit conversion of existing staples off a supply store to an Aldi supermarket, approximately twenty thousand two hundred sixty-five square feet in area. The current M1 zoning regulations limit the size and type of retail stores, don't allow supermarkets as of right. And I know Commissioner Benjamin asked about the special permit process, and the answer is that we looked at a variety of options, but the special permit was not available because the parking requirement would not be satisfied on the lot. In addition, in today's challenging retail market, future use of some of the other stores over ten thousand square feet that may have required subsequent special permits could have resulted in long, long-term vacancies. So this adds flexibility. When we started the process, the C7-1 district wasn't even available. I'm not sure whether this is the first C7-1 coming before the city, but that was the solution that City Planning came up with, along with our team. And I would note that it does reduce the overall floor area permitted on the site from, from two-point-four, which includes community facility, to two-point-oh. So there was an overall reduction in that. This has been very well received by the community. There are no other supermarkets of this size in the surrounding area. I know that question was raised. There are currently two supermarkets on the other side of the expressway, seventy-five hundred square feet in area and fifty-five hundred square feet in area. So the community is excited to get an Aldi supermarket. There is no new development proposed. The lease with Aldi would not permit use of the parking lot, and obviously, a vertical enlargement would be challenging due to disruption of the existing tendencies within the building. Also, the site, as you can see in the photo, is laid out. The McDonald's area is to the left. They control their own areas, and they, again, the other users have long-term leases. The site is convenient. There's a bus line that runs directly adjacent to the site, as well as a couple other buses in the nearby area. The zoning will only affect this site. It will change from M1-1 to C7-1. We are adjacent to the second-largest industrial business zone in the city, but there has never been industrial or manufacturing uses on this site, which has been developed commercially. We have members of our team available to respond to any questions the commission has.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to start with Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Mr. Rothgrub. As you, obviously, you were listening on Monday. My concern is that you're using less than half of your FAR now. And with this rezoning, you will have basically four times as much FAR as you're currently using. And I know that your intention is just to build an Aldi's at twenty-something thousand square feet, but my concern is that particularly since you don't require the parking under the C7, that you could eliminate the parking and build more commercial.
So I would say two things. One is traditionally, retail developments require parking. And as I said, the lease with Aldi does require that we preserve the existing parking. They need parking for their operations. So to some extent, as you said, the current zoning would permit us to build twice as much, and yet we haven't done that because, again, second-story retail or office use is not really feasible here. And again, these tenants require parking. So again, this was after discussions with, with City Planning. We originally looked at a C8 zone. That would have allowed a four-point-eight community facility FAR. So, so again, if you look at potential medical use here, we are, you know, we're taking off a large expansion here. So we think overall, there is, it's unlikely that there'll be expansion of the existing floor area on the site.
And if you can't come to an agreement with Aldi's, what could this be under the C7-1?
So I'll say this, we have assigned executed lease with Aldi, so I would say that. Other than that, again, the ten thousand square foot limitation, which currently only permits a small variety of stores, it would, it would permit, you know, department stores or dollar stores or other stores over ten thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing everyone again.
Nice to see you. Madam Secretary, are there members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, 535 Morgan Avenue?
Just confirming, Larry, Ray, Ben, and Chris are part of your team?
Yes.
Okay. No other speakers.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing on calendar thirty-six, 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning, and let's move on to the next, calendar thirty-seven, please.
For Brooklyn, calendar number thirty-seven, 74 Bogart Street rezoning, CD1, C250064ZMK. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 74 Bogart Street rezoning.
Great. Thank you. On behalf of the applicant team, we have Andrew Eiger, Ethan Goodman, Steve Novenstein, Paul Carr, Jeff Rubin, John Clifford. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the commission, my name's Ethan Goodman, and I'm with Firma Fox Rothschild. We represent the applicant, 74 Bogart LLC, in their application for a full block rezoning in the East Williamsburg neighborhood of Brooklyn, from its current M1-2 district to an M1-4A district. Just a brief overview of OVO and what they do and who they are. OVO is an art and fashion logistics company. They serve artists, museums, galleries, foundations, and institutions all across the country. They have twenty-six locations across the US, but their headquarters is here in New York at 4154 Twenty-Second Street on Long Island City. That's the picture you see to the right. It is right at the approach to the Queensborough Bridge. That was the structure they built in 2014 as their flagship headquarters. And in 2020, they built a second location about eight or nine blocks south of the site we're talking about today at 105 Evergreen Avenue, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand square foot. They employ about forty-one Brooklyn and about sixty-five New York City residents, and this facility is expected to create up to thirty additional new jobs. So OVO has been, been serving and supporting New York City institutions for many years. While this project has been touted as a art storage facility, OVO is much more than just storage. They are a whole logistics company for art, fine arts, collectibles, fashion. They deal with art handling, art installations, art de-installations, logistics for museums, and individual collectors, and other institutions. And they've been heavily involved in the community for a number of years. One really interesting thing they do is in supporting the local artist community, they have something called the OVO Prize. They just last month awarded their fifth prize to a local artist. This goes to emerging artists in the area, and they provide a twenty-five thousand dollar grant and a fifty-by-fifty-foot public art installation on their Evergreen Avenue facade. And you see the five examples of the artists. It is a great boon to the artists. It's launched more than one career, and they also, most importantly, have an exhibit at the Brooklyn Museum to showcase their art. So the site itself is immediately adjacent to the Morgan Avenue subway station on the L-line on Morgan Avenue between Bogart and Morgan Ingram and Harrison Street. The site is, the entire block is owned by the OVO parent organization, is developed on its eastern half with a self-storage facility, and the western half is currently FedEx truck parking. This rezoning would permit the development of the western half of the block for the facility that we're talking about. The rezoning district itself was emerged upon in conjunction with the department staff, considering DCP planning principles as outlined in the North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan. As you'll see, our site is at the bottom of the screen, that pink area is called the Growth District. We are right in the middle of the Growth District, in which the plan identified goals being increased density for commercial industrial uses, creating new loft-like building envelopes, and developing new M districts or land use tools that allow for densities between and developing new M districts or land use tools that allow for densities between 2 and 5 FAR. Pursuant to the City of Yes for Economic Opportunity, we are actually proposing what, like Mr. Rothgrub said for his C-7-1, may be the first M-1-4A district before you, proposing to change from an M-1-2 to an M-1-4A, which would allow the 5 FAR. It does not change the uses that would otherwise be allowed on the site, just permits the additional density to be able to build a building. With that, I'm going to pass it over to John Clifford with S9 Architects to talk about the design intent in the building we propose to build.
Good morning. My name is John Clifford. One of the interesting things about Williamsburg is not just its collection of artists and people that create art there, but how it, the art is displayed in public art all over the neighborhood and the public realm, and also, the grittiness and the industrial patina that exists in Williamsburg. So in designing the building in Bushwick, we really wanted to do a modern interpretation of both that lifestyle and the historic context of the neighborhood. This is the massing of the proposed building on the edge of the lot on the Bogart side, adjacent to the existing self-storage. And here's a view approximately right when you come out of the subway and approach the neighborhood from the site. You can see the surface parking for the FedEx with the steel picket security fence. And what we conceived is an object where we're really celebrating art and celebrating what is being done inside. So, you know, using the warehouse kind of massing that exists around the site, but pulling that back at these important corners and having commissioned art pieces as part of the architecture. And then on the ground plane, what we want to do is activate it. So in that close corner that you see there is the entry to the art storage facility, some of the offices, and then as you go down the block, we have art display gallery windows there. The public art actually wraps around the corner on each of the sides of the building as well, which we'll see in a close-up. Stuck. Yep. So this is a close-up. This would be the entry into the art facility, storage area to the left of that. So the first two bays are the entry, then it's the offices for the facility, and farther down the block on the far left is public art gallery display. This is right off McKibben's. This is a direct elevation. Again, you can see that we're celebrating the kind of street art, public art that's through the public realm in East Williamsburg, and activating the street all along Bogart. From the other corner, this is from the north corner looking south on Bogart, so you can see that public art wrapping around the corner, and in those display windows right there is a rotating art display.
So before we close, I just want to touch briefly on our experience with the Community Board and some of the conditions that arose out of their recommendation. So the Community Board, contrary to the first two letters you'll see in the recommendation, which is a no, is actually was met with a fair amount of positivity and enthusiasm. Land Use Committee voted 11 to 1 in favor of this with certain conditions, and at the full board, they flipped that to a, instead of the yes, provided, the wonderful, no, unless. But the conditions did not change, and they're conditions that we're fully aligned with and pursuing right as we speak. And those conditions were essentially work with local schools to promote art education. This is something we're already, we've already been doing at PS 274 in conjunction with the Evergreen Facility, and we are currently developing a program to bring art into the classrooms for the local PS 145, and also in adjacent women's high school, the Young Women's Leadership School of Brooklyn. We think that's the great opportunity to spread our mission and our gospel across the community and help kids experience art that they might not ordinarily get in their curriculums. A second condition was to work with Parks Department in CB1 to contribute to maintenance and capital improvements of Gilbert Ramirez Park. We are fully aligned with that as well. Gilbert Ramirez Park is our front door. The subway exit exits essentially into the side of Gilbert Ramirez Park. That park does need a lot of maintenance work, and we've already engaged with North Brooklyn Parks Alliance to determine the best place to devote our efforts. Finally, using local artists for outside work. Yep, we are currently developing a program. You know, we could talk more about the ground floor frontage and some of the challenges there, but we're trying our best to activate that ground floor frontage, and so right now, we're holding a plan to do ground floor show windows with local art. There may also be potential OVO Prize tie-ins with the activation of the facade in that regard as well. And finally, it's about electric, and that's, they want to examine the feasibility of 100% electric. We do have very stringent requirements for continued power supply here, because all this art is very valuable. It's got to be stored at the right temperatures, the right humidities. We can't have breaks in that, so we have to make sure the system works 100% well. But yeah, we're fully committed to doing a feasibility assessment, see if we can go 100% electric in this project. With that, that closes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for your responsiveness to the Community Board's concerns. We always appreciate seeing that. Just spend a moment, if you will, laying out for us the functional differences between the M-1-2 and the M-1-4A. I'll use this as a public service announcement. This may be the first private app using the new tools delivered through City of Yes for Economic Opportunity as it relates to the new manufacturing districts. What was it about the M-1-4A that did it for you? What was the thing that made that a desirable opportunity, and what was the limitation for the M-1-2?
Right. So limitation primarily for the M-1-2, that's an easy one. That's floor area ratio. In the block, the 2 FAR is already used in the storage facility that's built on the eastern half of the block, so there's nothing remaining to put a development on the FedEx facility side of the block. So we needed to increase the FAR to some extent so we could build a facility. So that's where you get to something in the order of a 5 FAR menu of districts. The M-1-5 was the district that was in existence before City of Yes. M-1-4A also provides 5 FAR. What the M-1-4A does is it allows for a little more flexibility in massing. The M-1-4A, as indicated in the City of Yes, is, it intends to allow for these loft-like building envelopes. Honestly, the project could probably work under the M-1-5 as well. However, the M-1-5 limits the front wall height to 85 feet. So if we extend anything above 85 feet, we've got a setback. And the way we're working with floor area here, we'd like to create as large floor plates as we can to, you know, be as functional as we can, right? So we were sort of running up against that 85-foot height, and so the additional height allows for substantial additional flexibility here. It probably allowed for more height than we could ever use on the facility because of floor area limits. I believe the M-1-4A allows for up to about 155 feet, so we wouldn't come anywhere close to that just because of FAR, but we may go slightly above the 85 feet. So it's primarily that. Uses are the same. There are no additional uses from the M-1-2 to the M-1-4A. It's the same menu of M-1 uses that could go here.
Right. Well, it's exactly what we contemplated when proposing that district, so I like to hear that. Okay, let me see if there are other questions for you. Commissioner Man.
Thank you, Chair. Ethan, I was just going to follow up on the question I had about the streetscape and the ground floor. As you pointed out, you know, it's across the street from the L station, Morgan Avenue. For those of, you know, us who know the neighborhood well, it's quite a busy and active and changing neighborhood. And one of the reasons I think the Growth District was proposed here way back then was that there's a thought that, like Williamsburg and even to some extent Dumbo, that this could be a future office district. Obviously, you know, things have changed, but I think that was some of the thinking going back, you know, several years. And there's a lot of, you know, nightlife, entertainment use in the area. Burgers is around the corner, a lot of bars and restaurants. So I just want to understand, kind of on Bogart Street in particular, and maybe to a commercial overlay depth of 50 feet or so, 100 feet, what the ground floor condition will look like? I appreciate you guys have done some additional renderings here.
Yeah.
To showcase that, but can you just give a simple site plan you could show or a ground floor plan?
Yeah, I sure can. And I just, it's worth spending just a moment on some of the constraints we're faced with with this particular use, not necessarily office use. The ownership entity of this block is actually fully aligned with enlivening the street front. The self-storage facility, which is a CubeSmart on the other side of the block, there was a lot of desire to do exactly that on that side of the block as well. And I'll just show you what they came up with on that side, right? We hope this is going to open in the next number of months, and this is actually an act of retail use at the base of a self-storage facility, which you do not see much in the city. And so retail is something that the company is definitely willing to do. The difficulties with this particular use is that what's happening inside is essentially the stored fine art of very high value, and a lot of the clients that will store the art here have very stringent requirements for the control of what happens in the entire building, especially including the ground floor, and making sure that nothing happens that sort of could lead to, you know, some unintentional event, or fire, or flood, or anything like that. So the challenge with bringing in like a retailer in here is you're giving them the space under a lease. Let's say they do something like, you know, bring a propane tank or something in there that they're not allowed to under a lease, but something happens, it's something that the clients who store the art here are very sensitive to. So we're looking to do something here on the ground floor that is as active as we can make it, but still retain sort of control of a space. Right now, we've got show windows to a depth of a few feet, right, that can be highlighted with light and with art and with other programming. I will show you how the ground floor lays out. Maybe John can walk through what we're looking at at the ground floor here. So this is a ground floor view, and we've got the, so the sort of offices and entrances in blue in sort of the lower left. Those are portions of the facade that we can actually make transparent with, you know, actually windows that look in. And then there's this portion to the north of that, that's sort of like 40% of the front edge to the north of that, which is these, where we've currently programmed these show windows. That, we're a little bit more limited, you know, we've got the storage behind it, so we can pull it back a little bit. You pull it back a lot, you begin to sort of, you know, compromise a little bit of the use inside, but, you know, we want to say, because this came up with the Community Board too, we have an open mind as to how we can use that. I don't know that retail is an answer that we can land on in this regard, but maybe it's something to, that's a little bit more than a show window that can somehow activate that frontage.
Yeah, I guess I would encourage you to continue to push there, whether it's, it sounds like food and beverage is not a great fit. There's obviously other retails that's not food and beverage, that doesn't have the same, you know, gas questions that you were raising earlier. And I can't, you know, I don't know what the column bay depth there is, 25 feet, 30 feet or so, somewhere in that range.
I think it's 20.
20. Yeah, I mean, there's obviously things like art galleries themselves, you know, I just, it would be, you know, this is one of the parts of the city that I think is one of the most dynamic parts of New York City, and doesn't necessarily get the same treatment it would if we were talking about a place like Manhattan. And so I just, I do think that, you know, thinking about enlivening Bogart Street in particular, across the street from the L stop at Morgan, which is, you know, one of the hippest places in America, basically, with something that has a sense of acknowledgement of that reality, I think would be really important here. So I just would continue to encourage you all to push in that direction. There's a lot of floor area you're asking for. Obviously, you've maxed out the floor area, it sounds like, with the CubeSmart, so you're soaked up all of the floor area on the zoning lot already for development, and you're coming back and asking for more, which is great and consistent with the North Brooklyn study. But I do think that you have a responsibility to respond to the streetscape here a bit more ambitiously, so just continue to push there.
We hear you, certainly will work hard.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you very much. I do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on calendar number 37. Final call on that, closing the hearing on calendar 37. And let us move on to 38 and 39, Madam Secretary.
For Queens, calendar numbers 38 and 39, 7801 Queens Boulevard rezoning, CD4. Calendar number 38, seat 250044ZMQ. Calendar number 39, in 250045ZRQ. Public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 7801 Queens Boulevard rezoning.
Great. For the applicant team, we have Andrew Esposito, Frank Saint-Jacques, and Timothy Sudwicks. Welcome. You have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Saint-Jacques with Acreman LLC. We're land use counsel for this project. I'm actually doing an individual presentation. The others are available for comments. And just given the, some of the comments at the review session on Monday, I'm just going to focus on the land use rationale for this project. I can jump into project details if there's specific questions. But I'm showing the zoning map here. The rezoning area that's proposed to be rezoned is R7X C23, is shown in the inset. It's currently within an M-1-1 zoning district that was established in 1961. On the larger zoning map, I've highlighted where R7X is mapped to the west of the project area along Queens Boulevard. And much of this R7X was mapped nearly 20 years ago with the Massbeth Woodside rezoning from 2006. It established R7X with C23 overlays along a 23-block span, mostly replacing C-8-1 and M-1-1, along with some lower-density residential districts. So similar to the portion of Queens Boulevard we're seeking to rezone in this application. At the time, in the 2006 Massbeth Woodside rezoning, the Commission then indicated that the R7X would foster opportunities for new housing and buildings of a scale and density appropriate for the wide Queens Boulevard thoroughfare. Also, an inclusionary housing designated area was created to promote affordable housing production. And then separately, MIH areas were mapped in separate actions, including as recently as 2018, on the easternmost end of this large R7X, to the west of our rezoning area. So showing our rezoning area, as well as the development site on this land use map, I'll note that it is similar to the underutilized C-8-1 and M-1-1-zoned portions of Queens Boulevard that were rezoned back in 2006. This rezoning area is primarily commercial. As you can see, it's, most of the properties are designated red for commercial, as well as some of the properties to the west within the existing M-1-1. And we're adjacent to R6 and C42 to the south on Queens Boulevard, which is an R6 equivalent. So the rezoning would serve to connect this portion of Queens Boulevard with the adjacent R6 and C42. And I'll note that C42 and R6 would allow up to a 3.9 residential FAR and up to 4.8 with community facility comparable to the proposed R7X, which will allow 6.0. And then at certain sites over 20,000 square feet would allow height of up to 125 feet in the R7X, or, excuse me, in the current R6 and C42. Running out of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to start with Commissioner Goodrich.
Hi. So the Community Board voted no, and I, unfavorably, and I wanted to ask you for some responses to some of their concerns. One of them, the school size. They note, and I'll just read here, Queen School District 24, which serves this neighborhood, is one of the most overcrowded school districts in New York City, and for years, our district has operated well above capacity at roughly 115% of, on average, of the mid-2010.
Yes, thank you. So we had pretty extensive discussion, pre-certification and throughout the Eular process with Community Board Four.
They did, no? Start us right off.
I'm sorry?
They still voted unfavorably, though, right?
That's correct, yes. They did, and they issued a pretty extensive letter. We had also submitted a letter responding to some of their concerns. I'm not sure if it's available to the Commission, but I'm happy to share that. With respect to the school issue that the Community Board noted, we prepared a full environmental assessment statement that determined while there would be between a 1% and 2% increase in school population for both elementary and intermediate schools, there would not be an adverse impact as it relates to school crowding. So the technical analyses performed by our environmental consultant determined that that would not be an issue.
Okay. They addressed that as well, but one of the things, they said, they said, "We find it," I'm literally reading from there.
Yes.
"We find it laughable that the applicant writes that the development and future developments would have no adverse impact to the pedestrian experience. There are significant transportation and pedestrian issues in light of the thousands of students, parents, teachers that concentrate on the vicinity of the development."
So again, I'll rely on our environmental assessment statement. This project was reviewed by the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation. We're actually providing some project components related to the environment as it relates to signal timing for one of the intersections approaching the site. So our technical analyses determined that there would not be a significant adverse impact relating to any of these transportation factors. So I know that often, Community Boards have a different anecdotal experience to what we prepare in terms of our technical analyses, but we did receive a negative declaration with respect to transportation, as well as schools and the other environmental chapters.
Okay. Let me move on to their other points about housing affordability, and they specifically say that these 16, and they put in quotes, "Affordable units," target those making 60% AMI under- those making 60% AMI under HUD, and considering that the average household income in our community is, um, 75 to 78,000 for a family of three, true affordability is 50% AMI, and anything more than that is out of reach for our neighbors and in reality displaces them.
Sure, so we had a pretty, uh, extensive discussion with the community board as it relates to our MIH, uh, uh, programming, um, this project would offer MIH option one, which provides, uh, 25% of the residential floor area at a weighted average of 60% AMI, uh, with 10% at 40% AMI, our breakdown is shown here, uh, this results in, um, 32 units at 40% AMI, uh, 15 at 60% AMI, and 32 at 80% AMI, resulting in the average of 60% AMI. We believe that this is really in line with the, uh, average AMI in the community board, they were concerned that the, uh, community preference has been reduced, um, I think one of the earlier applicants noted that this is a, a product of a, a settlement agreement between the city, um, in response to a lawsuit, so there's no longer a 50% preference, but it's, um, down to, I believe, uh, 20%, uh, so they were really concerned with, um, the number of, uh, affordable units that would be specifically reserved for the community board, but, you know, we note that, um, this project will, uh, do an extensive, um, outreach campaign, uh, to fill these units, uh, as, with, as locally as possible, but, you know, that's through HPD's Housing Connect.
Just to follow up, their main concern is, is so, looking at this chart, most, or at least equal to, um, the units would be 80% AMI, so I don't think they're asking about the, the weighted part, I think what their concern is from, at least from what I'm reading, is that a huge chunk of the apartments would be above 60% AMI and that most of the people in that community, um, can't afford that for affordable housing.
Sure, I, I mean, I, I guess I'll, I'll note that, uh, they, while the, um, area median income is, is closer to 60%, um, that's a, that is an average in the same way that this is an average, so we're providing, uh, both lower, you know, or about the same, uh, AMI and higher, uh, to, to reach, you know, the, the full spectrum. Um, understand the concern, but, but this is, you know, compliant with, with MIH option one, um, you know, we're, uh, flexible to, um, to, to changing that, that unit mix around, but this is one that we found works in other developments and, um, allows for, um, the production of affordable housing that's cross-subsidized by the market rate housing.
My last question about the flexibility, is there any chance that you would change it to reflect something deep, more deeper affordability?
Um, I, I will note this is the ultimate discussion of the council member, um, that hasn't been asked of the project team, but it's something that we would consider.
Oh, you mean, it hasn't been asked by the council member, it's been asked by the...
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, it, not specifically asked, but, but, um, it has not been asked by the council member, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Muddin.
Thank you, Chair. So, I have a question and I saw, saw some more of, of information, I don't know if you were here earlier when HPD presented Claremont House and the specifics of community preferences were discussed, um, but the gentleman presenting the project, Alan Beckerman, indicated that as a result of the lawsuit, right now it's at 20%, but it's going to drop to 15. Does your community, does, does, does the community know that, have they been made aware? And if so, how does that play into your project? Are you closing in time for the 20% preference or the 15% preference?
I don't have my notes in front of me as to when that preference changes, I know that was discussed, uh, I can't speak to precisely what the community board knows, but I, I know that, um, in my notes at, at the community board meeting, we, we did discuss that because it was, uh, an, an issue that they had raised, um...
Can you, can you let us, can you find out and let us know when that 15% preference kicks in? That question was asked of HPD, but I fear that it will never get answered.
Um, a- absolutely, it's, it's literally in my notes here, but I don't wanna shuffle papers, but I'm happy to provide that in writing.
No, no, absolutely, I don't expect it now, but if you can get back to us, that would be appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just note, I think the commission is aware of this, that's just outside of our control, it makes it a little bit more difficult for applicants now that it's not 50%, but it's, it's just sort of how, how things have happened.
No, it's understood, and it is beyond any of our controls, and, and so it's just education and, and understanding, you know, these questions are asked, sometimes they're rhetorical questions because we know the answers, but they're being asked to, to edify folks in the audience who don't, or on camera who don't understand and have these questions, and it also helps to alleviate any of the concerns that they may have by providing an answer that the community's been requesting for a while, so if someone could respond to the question, that would be great.
Understood, will do.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, thank you for the presentation, we appreciate it. Um, we have one member of the public wishing to be heard, Sarah Penenberg, who I think is signed up to be in, appear in person, but I don't see her. Okay, um, and we don't have her on Zoom, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, we'll close the hearing then on calendar 38 and 39, uh, 7801 Queens Boulevard. Madam Secretary, what's next? The reports, um, uh, we have a bunch of votes today, I will just note it's a mix of, uh, developments, including some all affordable developments at 5602, 5604 Broadway, um, in Kingsbridge, 1946 Seventh, uh, Seventh Street in Homecrest Brooklyn, which is also a 100% income-restricted affordable building, as well as a vote at 350 Park Avenue in East Midtown for a 1.5 million square foot commercial office building, uh, taking advantage of a variety of provisions put in place by the East Midtown rezoning in 2017, uh, which a number of the folks at this dais were, uh, a part of, uh, developing. We're also gonna vote at 515 Seventh Avenue, uh, with two scenarios for an office tower or office plus hotel space, uh, it will include a 5,400 square foot covered pedestrian space, uh, with a cafe seating and artwork, and lastly, um, interior and individual landmark designations of the former Whitney Museum at 945 Madison Avenue, uh, in Lenox Hill, and an upgrade, uh, to the Mayflower Avenue Pumping Station on the south shore of Staten Island, so that is a, a wide-ranging set of votes, uh, today, so I think it's, uh, good to get the flavor of the things that we are, uh, activating here at the City Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, let's get into the voting, uh, for today, please.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 19 and 20, 5602, 5604 Broadway rezoning, CD8, calendar number 19, C240278ZMX, calendar number 20, N240279ZRX, in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 5602, 5604 Broadway rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 19 and 20, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 19 and 20. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 21 and 22, 1946 East Seventh Street rezoning, CD15, calendar number 21, C240252ZMK, calendar number 22, N240253ZRQ, in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1946 East Seventh Street rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 21 and 22, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 21 and 22. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 23 and 24, 350 Park Avenue, CD5, calendar number 23, C250197ZSM, calendar number 24, C250198ZSM, in the matter of applications for special permits concerning 350 Park Avenue, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 23 and 24, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo recused.
Recused.
Recused. Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 23 and 24. Calendar numbers 25, 26, 27, and 28, 515 Seventh Avenue, CD5, calendar number 25, C240248ZSM, calendar number 26, C240249ZSM, calendar number 27, C240246ZSM, calendar number 28, N240247ZRM, in the matter of applications for special permits and zoning text amendments concerning 515 Seventh Avenue, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 25, 26, 27, and 28, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraut. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 25, 26, 27, and 28. Calendar number 29, former Whitney Museum of American Art, CD8, N250310HIM, in the matter of a communication of, in the matter of a communication from the Landmarks Preservation Commission concerning a landmark designation report for the former Whitney Museum of American Art, for the adoption of calendar number 29 for referral to the city council, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A report has been adopted to forward to the city council on calendar number 29. Calendar number 30, former Whitney Museum of American Art Interiors, CD8, N250311HIM, in the matter of, uh, communication from the Landmarks Preservation Commission concerning a interior landmark designation report for the former Whitney Museum of American Art Interiors, for the adoption of calendar number 30 for referral to the city council, Chair Grodnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.